Good evening, we'll call the Town Hall meeting to order. I want to thank everyone for their patience, we had some technical challenges, but I want to thank Focus Springfield, and I want to thank all our interpreters, six different languages, English, Spanish, Arabic, Somali, Somali and Vietnamese, translators that are on, we appreciate that. I'm joined here by school committee members Barbara Gresham, Latonia Naylor, Denise Hurst, Peter Murphy, and Maria Perez are also online, and Vice Chair Chris Collins, Superintendent Warwick, very appreciative that my or our Dr. Anthony Fauci, Helen Carlton, Commissioner of Health and Human Services Helen Carlton Harris is here, has worked very closely with us, Pat Sullivan, our Director of Facilities and Parks, and he's done a tremendous job with facilities, and Bob Kirschner, who's a Principal at O'Reilly, Tom at Oakin, Industrial Hygienist, as we continue to pump in millions and millions of dollars to make sure that our buildings are properly retrofitted, with eye waves, carrier air filtration, you're going to see a presentation, in the meantime, we dole out probably about five million meals to our students and families. We've also put out, Superintendent, I believe, well over seventeen thousand laptops on the remote education, administration appearance and students to continue efforts as we move forward. I'm going to, I want to thank again Focus Springfield, Paul Foster, staffs from the School Department. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Warwick for some brief remarks, and Vice Chair Collins, we're going to make a presentation of everything we continue to do, and then we're going to open it up for questions and comments. Again, our goal is to get our children back into school as soon as possible, as long as it is safe and sound and following the public health criterias of the best interests of any and all. But in the meantime, we're going to continue to make sure that we're educating our children and our families. With that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Warwick.
Thank you Mayor. Paul, do you want to kick off with some of the logistics, Paul Foster?
Sure, so just on this slide, as the Mayor mentioned, we're broadcasting this in six languages, and so these are the links where the different language translations can be accessed. The easiest thing to do, if you're trying to find one of these, is go to this link right at the top, And as the presentation is happening, if you have comments or questions on the presentation or on the decision making that the school committee is undertaking around the possible return to school, you can text questions and comments to 413-238-1878. And Superintendent, I'll hand it back to you.
I want to just ask Vice Chair Collins if he has any comments during the discussion.
Good evening, everyone. The school committee is very, very happy to host this Town Hall meeting, as we did once before in the past. Obviously, we value the input from all of the people who I expect to hear from this evening. And we have, as the Mayor mentioned, we'll be getting a report on the state of our ventilation systems within the buildings. We'll then get a report on the state of the COVID in Springfield, and then Superintendent will go through hybrid and remote learnings, a sketch to see what it would look like in remote learning, and then go into a hybrid model. And so in a moment, we'll go right into that. I just personally wanted to say to anybody who's on, who's watching, please take this very, very seriously. Do what you're being asked to do by the health experts, and wear your mask and social distance. Having lost my own brother to COVID this week, I can assure you, this is not a hoax. This is not something that we can take lightly. We need to be very mindful of what's going on. And we feel just as strongly about giving all of the students as safe as we want ourselves to be. So I'll be glad, do you want to go right over to Helen, or right over to you, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mayor. We're going to walk through, and we thought we'd make a brief presentation for you on our progress so far with remote learning, very brief. A possible plan of what a hybrid could look like, should the school committee decide to go that route. Then we'll have Helen give us an update on COVID-19 in Springfield. Pat Sullivan at O'Reilly, Tom at Oakin, Bob Kirschner on building safety and ventilation. And then the most important piece of the meeting will be opening up to you to get your comments and then answer your questions. So we'll roll through our presentation as quickly as possible, because we want to leave maximum time to hear what you have to say. And I just want to thank Latonia Naylor for her idea on running these Town Hall meetings, one of our school committee members who suggested this, and our first one was a great event, so we're hoping for the same thing tonight. So remote learning, so what you see up on the screen right now is where we're at with remote learning as it stands right now. This State Department of Education passed a new requirement just this week relative to the hours of synchronous instruction. And synchronous instruction, what they're trying to focus on is when teachers are online directly with their students via video conference. We have a program where every student is scheduled into homeroom crew advisory to ensure a check-in and regular support, which is so important when you're in remote learning. So we're checking in, because there are a lot of other issues that can happen with families relative to mental health issues and so on. So that's a big part of our program. We have more asynchronous time on Wednesdays to allow for teacher planning. But the asynchronous is when the teachers aren't directly on with the students, but the students are still doing their work. And what we've tried to do is schedule extra synchronous time for direct instruction for our students with disabilities and English learners. We've gone through, we've submitted our student learning time plan to the DSE for their feedback to see if we meet the new requirements. And the new requirements, if you're in remote, is a minimum of forty hours every ten days of synchronous instruction. We're providing the full day of instruction, but some asynchronous. And you can see at the elementary, middle, and high school level, we exceed the hours required, and they rated us as having exceeded the requirements for the new student learning time regulations, which again focuses on synchronous instruction, and that's direct instruction from the teachers to the students. So that's where we are with a remote learning organizationally right now. So some data, just to frame how we're doing with this. So as you can see, across all the grades, it's pretty consistent. Last year, we averaged, if you go to the far right, total ninety-two point nine percent average daily attendance for students. Right now, in remote instruction, we're at ninety-one point five percent. As you can see, only a one point four percent difference, which is quite significant given the fact that we're in a pandemic, and this is a very unique situation. So that attendance has held very steady, and it's a very positive number to show our kids and our families are getting on every day and getting the benefit of the program. We expected a much bigger dip than that. Online activity, which shows where the students are online, you can see ninety-one point three percent. So they're not just there for attendance, but they're on through their classes throughout the day. So again, a very, very positive piece that shows that the students are online and benefiting from the program to a very high degree. And just to show academic progress, you saw in the paper across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, there was a very, very high rate of student failures first quarter. But in Springfield, last year was eight point seven, this year again, ten percent. So again, only a one point three difference. So given the differences with remote instruction, our failure rate, unlike most school systems that got reported in the Boston Globe, did not go up significantly. But I think this all speaks to the teachers doing an outstanding job, and the staff reaching out to families and making sure they stay engaged and stay connected and get their work done in equality. So another piece we wanted to go over with you, should we decide at some juncture to go to a hybrid plan, would be the process to go to that hybrid plan. And we're walking through the steps and the process in this slide, showing you the pieces like getting input today, a school committee vote on Thursday. You know, we'd actually have significant communication strategy. We'd have to actually do a survey to all our families to make sure we're giving the families what they want. So even if at some juncture we go to hybrid, if a family only felt comfortable in remote for now, we would honor that. So we'll walk through that. And again, we'd try to get teachers back into the school, subject to negotiations, before we put any plan in place. You know, when we actually survey families, we're going to make sure who wants to return, who wouldn't want to return, and again, for families that want to keep a student remote, even if we went back to hybrid, we would honor that request. For a family qualifies for transportation, if they don't want the transportation, we would also honor that request. And we would need to know that by doing a survey and outreach to families, similar to what we did last August when we reached out to all of our families. And then we would launch a hybrid plan subject, again, to school committee approval. The next slide, we're going to go over some potential phasing in options. Most systems in the Commonwealth, just about all, as they planned a hybrid plan, have talked about phasing in that hybrid plan, so you don't try to return all students at the same time, given all the challenges we're going to face as we phase this back in, given the constraints we have with the COVID crisis. Again, these are some possibilities that staff has talked about and prepared that we would discuss with school committee, but we wouldn't think about bringing everyone back at once in a hybrid plan. It would be certain groups. So our priority groups, as you can see in 1A, would be a tenth to twelfth grade vocational classes for our Putnam students, because in tenth to twelfth grade, they need certain hours to qualify for their vocational area. So that would be an early priority for us. High needs students with disabilities. So this would involve probably about ten to fifteen percent of our special ed students, where students had high needs and were receiving more than seventy-five percent of their instruction in a special education classroom. And what we call SLIF students, and these are students who come into our school system with a language other than English, but also our students who have huge gaps relative to having been in schools in the past. So they require significant programming. So the idea is, we get those kids in early on to try to to deal with all the issues that are confronting those different group of youngsters. In 1B, another high priority for us would be preschool, kindergarten, sixth and ninth, because they're the transition grades, and then twelfth, our seniors, again, trying to get them back in. Now, relative to the days of the week, our high needs populations, we'd like to get them in five days, if possible, but if that's subject to the transportation requirements and the different requirements we face with this COVID situation. The other populations would be two or three days a week, two days one week, three days the next. And again, another, the next phase of the group would be pre-K, K, six, nine, and twelve. Then our second group, or second, eighth and ten. Then our third group, third, fifth, and seventh. And then 3B could be at the same time, or if we need to phase it, fourth and eleven, till we had everyone back in. So a phased approach with some weeks in between each phasing group, so that we have time to ascertain if that's working out well. So again, that's what most districts have done, and have had some success with phasing groups back in. Next slide, hope you covered everything there.
I was just going to suggest we take a quick, you know, ten second breather to let the translators catch up.
Thanks, Paul. So here on this slide, we're talking about dividing the students into two groups, an A and a B group, if we're in a hybrid plan. So ideally, we'd have half the students in each group at the different grade levels. And one group of students would come in Monday, Tuesday, one week, and then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the next week. The other group, Group B, would be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, one week, and Monday, Thursday, Friday, the following week. So everyone would, Group A would stay Monday, Tuesday, Group B would be Thursday, Friday, and they'd split every other Wednesday. Cohort C would be the group that we try to get back in five days a week, again, those low students, the SLIF students, and the high needs bed students. Our cohort R, which are our families that would choose remote only, and if a family chooses that, we will honor that request. So when we do our survey, if a family only feels comfortable with remote for now, we'd understand and we honor that request. Now, kids in the A and B cohort, so the half group at the different grade levels, we have a program we put in place so the families, if you have several siblings, your kids would all be either in Group A or Group B, so they'd be coming to school or engaged in remote on the same days. The only caveat to that would be our vocational high school schedule might be a little different than that. We'll have to schedule that especially. But for families, they could expect their kids to be in either Group A or Group B, and all of their kids in those same groups. And this just shows you the weekly schedule, so there'd be a week one and week two. For the A group, on the first week, they'd be at school Monday and Tuesday, and then remote, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then on week two, that A group on the bottom, you can see, at school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and remote on Thursday and Friday, and just the reverse of that. So the kids would be either in two days one week or three days the next, depending on the group they're in. The C kids, again, we'd like to bring those groups in every day, but again, that's subject to transportation. And the remote group would stay remote regardless. So the only change is the A group and the B group, and they'd rotate the days, but they'd either be, the A group would be all Monday, Tuesday, the B group again, Thursday, Friday, and they'd rotate Wednesdays to maximize the participation. Now that's, you know, again, one possible hybrid plan that we've mapped out that's consistent with what's been successful across the state. So a key piece of this, of course, and I mentioned this earlier, is we have to do a student intention survey. So like we did in the past, staff from the schools will reach out to each family, because we'll need to know before we go hybrid, what families want to come in and what families want remote only. We'll also need to ask the question on transportation. So we'll have to say, if you qualify for transportation, do you want that transportation? That will give us the information to know how many kids will be potentially coming back, and how many be taking our buses, because we have significant limitations relative to how many students can fit on a bus. So for example, a large bus that can usually seat up to seventy students would only be able to fit twenty students. And a special ed bus that could fit up to twenty students would only be able to take five students in. So these questions will be keyed us relative to us being able to know how many kids we could transport safely every day. And we'd have to make the survey binding for the ten weeks, so we have, for planning purposes. So whatever a family chooses, they have to stay with it for a quarter, so that we can do all the logistics and planning to make sure it's safe on the bus and at school. The next piece of the presentation, I've asked our Public Health Commissioner, Helen Carlton Harris, who's been a great partner for the mayor and for the city of Springfield during this situation, and someone that we work with, and we probably work with Helen daily now, she probably wishes, we weren't dealing with her so much by the time. But she's been a great help, and again, the public health concerns are really significant here. But I thought Helen giving us an update on where we're at in Springfield right now to help us frame the discussion and the dilemma we're facing, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, thank you Superintendent, school committee members, and the public. This is a very important discussion that you are having this evening. It's important to recognize why we are here. Why are we having this conversation about hybrid learning? Why are we having this conversation across the nation as far as our children and school is concerned? It is because there is a highly contagious virus that goes from person to person. And so our entire nation has been shuttered, our world has changed. But it's very important that you know, as a public, that there is a group of individuals, leadership in Springfield Public Schools who are concerned about you and your children. I am not going to do a full presentation, I am going to give you some data, I'm going to give you some information. I would advise you to go to the city website. All of our charts that we do on a weekly basis are found there. If you have questions or need additional information, my staff and myself are here for that purpose. So please use us, we believe strongly that we are public servants, and we want to make sure we're giving credible information. The virus, COVID-19, we have been dealing with in the nation really since January. But in the city of Springfield, we have been dealing with this virus since March. And I just want to let you know where we have come from and where we are. In January, there were zero cases, and February, zero cases. March fifty-four, April one thousand sixty-nine, May thirteen hundred. June, we started to feel some measure of hope. We thought we were on the brink of maybe turning the corner on this virus. We watched our numbers go down from thirteen hundred in May to two hundred and eighty-nine in June, three hundred and twenty-eight in July, a slight increase, and then in August.
Yes, we're just asking you to slow down just a little bit, please.
Can we show, can you have slides, Helen, roll them?
I did not bring.
Can they show Helen, so they, she is actually what's showing on there, she is okay. So that highlighted box is you, so.
Where's the highlight?
Okay, that's all of us, that's what the public can see.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience, we're just, our translates, which we appreciate. Paul, you let us know when Mr. Carlton Harris can go forward. Okay, thank you, Mr.
In June, we started to see a decrease as we had two hundred and eighty-nine cases. In July, again, a slight uptick, but three hundred and twenty-eight cases. In August, the city of Springfield was green, which meant we were in the lowest category for COVID-19 cases. We had a hundred and eighty-two cases that month. September, we saw a slight increase, three hundred and eighteen cases. And then in October, we understood clearly that we were experiencing a surge. In October, we had eight hundred and sixty-seven cases. And then last month, November, was the worst month that we have ever experienced in the city of Springfield and across the nation as far as this virus is concerned. We had two thousand six hundred and sixty-seven cases. Clearly, you can see that we, as a city and as a nation, are in the throes of this highly contagious virus. I'm going to give you a little bit more data. The week of November the twenty-second, there were six hundred and seventy-five cases, three short weeks ago. Then, November twenty-ninth, one thousand one hundred sixty-eight cases, we're talking about one week. And then last week, we saw a slight one hundred and thirty-five decrease in our cases, and we had one thousand thirty-three. Forty-one percent of those cases are age thirty and under. Thirty-three percent of those cases are thirty-one to fifty. And then twenty-six of last, twenty-six percent of last week's cases were fifty-one and older. Last week, eighty-four cases were zero to ten years old. A hundred and fifty-two of our cases were eleven to twenty years old. So two hundred and thirty-six of the cases from last week, which is twenty-two point eight percent, were under the age of twenty. I tell you that because we're talking about that age group. As we think about how we mitigate this virus, and while we understand that children do not get as ill as older individuals and may not wind up being hospitalized, we also know that children can carry the virus and certainly can spread the virus to older individuals. That is not to shock you, that is not to disserve you, that is the reality that we live with right now. I have talked to Mark Kerewak, the president of Bay State today, and he tells me that in the hospital right now, there are a hundred and seventy individuals. Fifty-five individuals in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts died today, and there were three hundred, three thousand seven hundred and twenty cases. Again, this is not to shock you or make you just cringe. It is to give you the facts because. It is to give you the facts because we are still in the throes of this contagious virus. So I've been working with Springfield Public Schools. I've been working uh with certainly the uh staff in public schools. I've been working with closely so that we can use data to inform our decisions. So we are.
Commissioner Carlton-Harris, is it possible to slow down a hair for our language interpreters? Thank you so much.
I brought that whistle. Just a minute. Uh can I continue or should I just wait for you to uh to catch up? The interpreters, how are we doing? I can go.
You can go, just maybe pause between phrases kind of thing.
Thank you very much. So I've been working with Springfield uh Public Schools, as I said, and we are every day looking at the data and trying to make data-informed decisions. We want nothing more than to have our children back in the classroom. We understand scientifically because we know that health is physical, mental, spiritual, and emotional. That a huge part of that has to do with school and being inside of the classroom and being supported. However, we will not make decisions that put anyone, including our educators, in a position where they could potentially be harmed or have the opportunity to have COVID-19. This virus likes a host. We people are the host. It jumps from me to you to the next person. And sometimes we don't even know that we have this COVID-19 and we spread it. There is a lot of community spread in the city of Springfield, the Commonwealth, and the nation. And so that is where we are. Everything, every decision, every discussion, everything that superintendent, the mayor, and school committee has done, has been done with your children at the forefront of our thoughts. And it's important that you recognize that. We are excited about a vaccine. Very excited. That is the good news that we are all celebrating. There is a vaccine. We hope that the vaccine will become available uh to the general public. But we know that that's not going to happen until sometime between April and June. The phase one of the vaccine is for the clinical and non-clinical COVID-facing individuals. The second phase will move on to other individuals. And there we find early education K through 12. So it will not be into that second phase where we start to see where we can we can vaccinate our educators. And so I, again, the data that you need is up on our website. We put it up weekly. We have a press conference every Monday to give you the data around your zip codes, around race and ethnicity. We make sure that we are being as informational as possible. But it's important for me to let you know from a public health perspective, your children are what we care about and what everyone in leadership in the city of Springfield is thinking of as we make decisions. Again, please uh feel free to call me at my office. I am always available. I'm happy to take phone calls and give additional information if requested. Thank you, superintendent. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, school committee, for this opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next important part of the meeting is, given with the mayor's support, Steve has been great and has been with us through this process. Not only to help us purchase all the technology, get the remote learning going, again, on a city side of the budget to help us go, but also to do the building upgrades we need to our ventilation systems so that our buildings do be conducive and safe for our students and staff in light of the COVID-19 crisis. So Pat Sullivan took a look at the recommendations for facilities from DESI and decided it was a good idea to go beyond those recommendations and bring in industrial hygienist. And we brought in O'Reilly, Talbot, and Open Percher here so that we're sure our buildings would be safe and the ventilation would be appropriate. And again, exceed the DESI standards, but actually meet the ASHRAE standards. So our ventilation would be safe for our students and staff in the buildings. And Pat has been tireless working with us again every day through this crisis. Has already done a lot of work in the buildings. But I'm going to turn it over to Pat to go over what we what we're proposing relative to the ventilation and idea of the work that's being done, what the recommendations are. And then the timelines to complete that work. Great. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Pat.
Right.
Just a reminder to to take it, take it slow.
I'll do my best. So do you have the introduction slide? Great. So as the superintendent stated, uh myself, Helen Carlton-Harris, the superintendent, and the mayor met to review the DESI standards. We felt very strongly when we went through those standards, they were inadequate. And we felt the city could do better than putting a box stand in a window with a filter on it. And that was one of the recommendations. We hired O'Reilly, Talbot, and Olton, Bob Percher, who was with us tonight. He has confirmed that all 55 properties meet the Commonwealth of Mass building codes as they pertain to occupancy safety, air quality ventilation, and the Massachusetts Fire Code. He also identified that the HBAC systems have been properly cleaned and maintained on a scheduled basis. And has reviewed our work order system to further show that there are policies and procedures in maintaining our systems. And this is what we've been reporting to the school committee for the past 10 years. Next slide. In meeting with Mr. Percher, it was decided very quickly that we needed to follow the ASHRAE standard. ASHRAE stands for the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning. The ASHRAE Epidemic Task Force provided a guidance document which was prepared to assist schools and universities in considering in-person reopening activities. We met with the school committee back in September, and I applaud the school committee for supporting this uh report to move forward with the standard. So in conclusion, we have identified through Mr. Percher's review of our facilities that 51 of the school buildings already meet the ASHRAE standard. Four of our school buildings will require additional HEPA filters and supplemental controls, and I'll go through that a little bit later in this discussion. The four schools requiring this are Brightwood, Palmer, Kensington, and Bridge Academy. Next slide, please. The majority of the schools constructed in the 1950s through the 1970s use a unit ventilator system. This is very good in the fight against COVID. These systems can be modified and increased through the volume of air entering a building. This increase of volume will increase the demand on the heating systems during cold and extreme weather. And that was one of our decisions about opening schools at this time because of the comfort conditions and the possible freeze-up conditions. There are the four remaining schools that will require the ventilation system. And it and um we will be ready to purchase, we have purchased those additional ventilation systems for those schools. Next slide, please. Many of our school systems also use a computerized monitoring system. So from the facilities department, we can go into these systems and increase the airflow from our computer systems to ensure that we have a 25% air volume going through our systems. Next, next slide. Go up two slides, Paul.
The next slide. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
So to recap the recommendations, we're going to be modifying and adjusting the sequence of HBAC operations. We're going to perform an initial air flush for a minimum of one week prior to students returning to school. We're going to perform a daily air flush for a minimum of two hours at the end of the day of the school day. We're going to be adjusting the volume of air to 25%. We're going to install i-Wave technology into the appropriate duct systems. And we're going to modify and adjust the demand-controlled ventilation systems. Next slide. We are in the process and almost complete with installing air filters with a MIR 13 filter in all of our units of systems. We are ordering the portable HEPA carrier uh systems. The last shipment is expected this week. We're going to ensure continuous operations of the building's exhaust systems. We're updating our facilities preventative maintenance schedules to enhance HBAC operations. Next slide. And then for the public that hasn't seen this before, this will be the carrier optical units that have been ordered. And with the mayor's assistance, over $1.4 million in equipment is being purchased and installed at our schools, both between these i-Wave uh between the carrier units and with the i-Wave technology. If you want to go to the next slide. And then on the i-Wave, tomorrow, we're going to send a link for the school committee members. We wanted to show a video tonight. But it wouldn't work with this town hall setup, and it's a three-minute presentation about i-Wave. And I encourage the school committee to watch that presentation because it's very informative and how the i-Wave actually um is possible to remove the COVID-19 and other viruses from the air in our building systems where we couldn't put this in. So we've ordered roughly 700 i-Waves to be installed throughout uh the school districts that can accept this technology.
Yeah, I also, I believe that the press conference that we do with our hospitals, Dr. Kerewak and Dr. Russell Mercy, Dr. Care of Bay State, last Monday's press conference.
We showed it.
The video we showed with a documentary that Pat Director Sullivan spoke of. So that we've seen a focus going on our website. You can see that video to the viewing public. It will not be press conference, Helen, the rest of us did yesterday morning. The one before, the week before, which would be the set on Saturday.
Pat, can you put the video on the school, the school department website?
Sure, sure. Yep. So I think I sent it to Paul. Well, Paul already has it, actually, but we can. So in closing, uh I want to thank the superintendent. He's been working along with me for the past 15 years when I started the management of these facilities. He's assisted me and the mayor in bringing over $600 million back to the school district to make improvements. I want to thank the mayor. He has invested over $35 million into the HBAC systems, into our school systems. And this is why we're ready for these type of situations and bringing our children back and trying to create a safe environment. And I think the other thing that Bob noted um in his report that these changes are just one element in the fight in prevention of the COVID-19. Uh it's still going to be very important for all of us to wear our face mask, hand washing, safe social distancing until we get to a a report from our health commissioner that we no longer need that. So these are all steps in making a very safe working environment. The timeline, all this work can't happen overnight. We are going to need probably a couple of months to do the installs of the i-Wave. We have to do electrical upgrades. EverSource has been a tremendous resource to the city and assisting with those four school locations that need electrical upgrades. And all that is happening um and but it will take a a couple of months to do that. And we're in daily conversations with the superintendent on that. We should have a better uh update, I think, for your January meeting uh for a a finished timeline. But I applaud the school committee, and I'm very appreciative of of the mayor, the superintendent, and the school committee for listening to Helen and Bob and I when we raised the concerns about the DESI standards. Uh we and that they we felt they weren't adequate. And I think you you've made the right decision for the citizens of Springfield. So you should all be congratulated in the steps that you've taken and the good work that is happening in our school district. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Percher will answer any questions as will Director Sullivan.
Yeah, that concludes our our presentation piece. Like I said, the most important piece is here from the public on uh what what you see, what your uh recommendations to us are, and what your questions for us are. So we will look forward to hearing those uh questions and concerns. So Paul, do you have some directions for folks?
Yeah, so as we said at the beginning, uh questions and comments can be submitted via text message. And that's 413-238-1878. And also comments and questions can be emailed to commoffice, C-O-M-M-O-F-S-I-C-E at springfieldpublicschools.com. And I think both Zell and I have been receiving uh comments and questions as the presentation's been happening. And I think we're going to each kind of do a lot of comments rather than questions. And so I think we'll each kind of read off five, five or so comments, and then we'll hand off to the other to to read off a few, if that works. Okay. Ready? Are you ready for us to dive in?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I can start. These are comments coming in via text message. Uh the first one is from a student who's uh saying remote education should be voluntary. Many parents, students, and educators would like to return. Many others prefer to stay remote. Do we have the capability to meet the needs of both groups? So I know our presentation already spoke to that, but I wanted to share the comment. Next comment. This is from a parent. As a parent to a kindergarten student in the city, I find invaluable learning lost trying to keep my child in front of a computer screen. I am lucky as a parent that is out of work to be able to have the time to work with him. But the children are not able to put in 100%. And the teachers spend half the time trying to keep the children focused on the task. I firmly believe valuable lessons are being lost and remote learning at our with remote learning and our children's inability to have hands-on learning. So I do have a question. So I'll, this will be a question. If we are in a hybrid model, is there a plan in case of emergency situations? Fire drill, lockdown, shelter in place? How are we to maintain social distance while making sure students and staff are prepared to respond appropriately?
So we we would have that as part of our plan. We'd file we have a fire drill protocol now that we follow. Of course, we'd have to keep the distancing as part of that, so we would have to drill on that if we come back in a hybrid with smaller numbers. So we would have to work on all those protocols and make sure they're unsafe because we have to provide those fire drills and other safety measures to make sure uh everyone's safe in the building. So we would, we would take care of that. Obviously, it's a bigger challenge than under typical circumstances. Obviously, it's a bigger challenge than under typical circumstances.
The next comment. This is from a parent. So my daughter is an eighth grader in the district. My husband is a teacher in a Connecticut high school. Both my sisters teach in Connecticut. One in a Catholic elementary school, one in a public middle school. I've been surprised at how very differently school has been handled by each different school. I think Springfield has handled the COVID crisis amazingly well. I hope that Springfield continues the full remote model until spring. And I think this is my fifth. Okay, this is also from a parent. I have two boys on the spectrum and currently remote learning. It has been very hard. No one wants to see the kids back in school more than me. But I want it done safely. I understand that DESI has current standards that if we have no evidence of transmission within the schools, red or not, we should open. Especially our special children should be brought back. My concerns are I myself know that in both my boys' classes, parents have tested positive for COVID. What happens when staff and/or parents expose my child? Because, and this is in quotes, they didn't know they had it. And it's brought back to my home where we have high-risk individuals. What are you doing to ensure that your staff follows strict guidance and takes COVID as seriously as my family has? Yeah, I think so. Zell, you want to take a few?
Okay, so I have one. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this person does not identify as staff or parent. But it says, I would feel more comfortable if we keep the schools closed and keep doing remote learning. I understand that a lot of people are having a hard time with children being home during this time. But we need to stay safe. Once a vaccine is out and working, then we can discuss about opening schools. But right now, it is not safe for teachers or students. The next one is a question. And I'm going to read it because it echoes a lot of the same questions that people are sending in. What measures will be in place regarding students and teachers coming back? Will there be procedures for entering and leaving the building? Lunch, student pickup, et cetera?
So I don't know whether I should answer that question, but obviously, we would plan protocols in place for arrival dismissal, seating in school to ensure we're following all the CDC guidelines relative to safety of students, all the PPE, and following all those protocols when we bring students back. So we would have those procedures all in place.
Thank you. This is a parent. Personally, I feel that if families can do remote, then they should. But the children who have special needs should be the ones who attend school. My son has learning disabilities, and being remote is not doing well for him. He at least used to be a C student, and now he's a failing student. If the only requirement is a flu vaccine, then we are there. However, he has asthma and he is exempt from that period. So I'd like to know when we're going to allow these children to even go back to school for some of the week versus sitting around in their house?
So Speds in our plan would be the first. The high-needs Speds students would be in the first grouping to return to school. Again, when we made the building modifications, we need to we also have to remember that high-needs Speds students have to have the highest incidence of pre-existing conditions. But we would certainly keep that in mind. We hear where the parents are coming from. And we would offer that to parents and put those students in the first group to return when we're ready to return.
This is from a teacher with 16 years of teaching experience in the district. I am writing to urge the school committee to continue with our remote learning plan through the second marking period. I am desperate to return to teaching in person with my students. However, I have many concerns about making the switch right now. I have friends that work in various districts that have returned to school or tried to return to in-person learning. What I have seen is a tremendous amount of stress on teachers and inconsistencies for their students. These are in towns with much lower COVID numbers than what we are experiencing in Springfield. And I think this is my fifth from a student. I would not like to go back to school because we would have to wear masks all day, and we are not really going to be around people because they are going to want to hug, and they will be spreading germs, and you never know who has Corona, especially since this is the second wave of it. And with that, I'll go over to you, Paul.
For virtual town hall is the question. When it is safe for us to return for hybrid, please consider students having the same weekly schedule because this will be important for procuring childcare on remote days. So I think they're meaning make sure kids go on the same days of the week.
That was addressed in the presentation.
This is phrased as a question, but I think it's a comment and sort of an input. Can schools do some virtual after-school clubs like drama, cooking, e-newspaper, so remote feels more like a whole-school experience?
I believe you had a teacher in Horena just sent her a note doing a computer science camp. They in the hall, I believe. Fantastic. Yeah, I think they just see Mr. Nastens have a story on it. So I know a superintendent could speak, but I know.
No, we encourage schools to do what they can in light of these conditions, so we encourage them to continue where they can with these various.
I do have a question here, which is how many cases will close a school building?
So I would defer to our health expert on that because it involves consulting with Helen and her team because a lot of them have to give them contact tracing, so I think it's a complicated issue that I can't.
But you answered the question very well. So your school nursing supervisor is on the call, and Jeannie Clancy and I have had this discussion, and we've had this discussion with other individuals, and what we know is it's going to depend on the community spread in that building, the size of the building, and what the potential risk and contact tracing is within that school. So that's a long way of saying that it's going to depend on where the infection occurs, how many individuals are infected, what classroom, what size. And so we are in the process of putting protocols together for the review of the school committee and the mayor and the superintendent. So that is the answer. But know that Springfield Public Schools will confer with the Board of Health. The Board of Health will also confirm with the epidemiologists. We make no decisions in isolation of each other.
All right, next comment. Please consider health and safety above all. Sickness or death are not acceptable gambles when education can be done remotely. There is light at the end of the tunnel, and we should be grateful for that, but we are not there yet. So I have another comment. Next comment. Could there be, it's a recommendation, could there be a quarter of the school population at a time if they divided it up into A-week morning, A-week afternoon, B-week morning, B-week afternoon? Please consider this. So I think the ask is around, you know, breaking the students into more than two groups. And I lost count, Zell, but I think it might be your turn.
Okay, I'll go. I have one. I am a teacher, but I am also a nurse. I do not feel that currently it is wise to open schools. I've had several students email me to let me know their family members have tested positive for COVID. I know parents want students to go back to school, and teachers cannot wait to get back, but under current circumstances, it would not be a safe environment. Teachers will end up being out sick, and there will not be enough coverage for physicians. Schools that have gone hybrid have had to close due to increased numbers. Springfield schools are even larger than some of the school systems that have closed.
You want me to take one, Zell?
Just give me two seconds. Yeah, you may need to go ahead and take one, Paul.
Sure. So I have a comment from a parent of a student at Putnam. I'm very concerned because my son is in a hands-on trade. It's not something that he can get a grasp of by simply watching a YouTube video. For freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, they will have the opportunity in years to come to catch up on the hands-on work that's inevitable with any trade. But you can't get a haircut over the internet. You can't get your furnace fixed over the internet. I said this, this is a parent of a senior at Putnam. My question is, since the population would be extremely small, can we have seniors alone go back to Putnam for their trade? They were promised co-op time and to be ready for their field. At least if they were in co-op and not in school, they would be getting the hours in. Please consider this as an option.
I have a couple here. A comment from a student, high school student. I know a lot of people who are really struggling with online learning. I know a lot of people who are struggling mentally because of the fact that they're sitting in one area for hours. And there are people who I know that have issues going on at home, and they're struggling to keep up with their work. A question. Do parents have the option to keep their kids home for the rest of the year?
So parents would be given the option. Should we go back hybrid? Parents would be given the option to stay remote if they felt that was the appropriate for their child. So yes is the answer for that. They would be given the option to stay remote.
Another comment. It is imperative to stay remote. This is from a parent. And a parent of several Springfield students, and I do not feel safe sending my children back to school. I also choose not to I think it's, I also choose not to question, is that a choice that parents can make? And then there's a question about the flu vaccine being required for students.
So the answer on the parents have a choice. Yes, the parents will have a choice. When we go back hybrid, if they want their child to stay remote, that will be up to them. They'll have that option. Relative to the flu vaccine as it stands right now.
It's mandated.
It's mandated as of January 1st. Religion or medical exemptions.
There is a part B to this question about the flu vaccine followed up by the COVID-19 vaccine. I do not want my children vaccinated with COVID-19. Is that going to be an issue with the school?
There is no, the two vaccines, Pfizer is for 16 years and over, so that's not an option for children. Moderna is going to be 18 years and over. So there will be no mandate for vaccination of children because the clinical trials did not include children, and so that is the answer.
I have a final one, and then I'll turn it over to you, Paul. It's a comment from an eighth grader. I would like to see us going back to school sometime soon. It is challenging and difficult for me, and I work better in a classroom.
All right, I have one from a parent. I would like to voice my support for dual in-person remote model, so the hybrid model. You cannot pick and choose which science you would like to follow when deciding if schools should be open or not. The side effects of these schools being closed will not be fully known for years to come, but it has been, in my experience, nothing but bad. My daughter has not set foot inside her building since March 14th. She's never met her new teacher. I cannot state everything I would like to say because there's far too much, but please do the right thing and go to a dual in-person remote learning model. Next comment, also from a parent. I don't agree with sending my son to school until after this whole COVID thing is controlled. I also need to feel comfortable to vaccinate him, and that will not happen until I get the vaccine myself. Another parent of a sophomore in high school. I want to add my voice in support of hybrid schooling. The city's students have been without in-person interaction with peers, teachers, and administrators for nine months. Their educational needs and social emotional needs are absolutely not met in a remote schooling model. I hope for a staged implementation of hybrid, from hybrid to full in-person schooling as vaccinations increase. Okay.
I have one.
Another, oh, go ahead.
This is from a student. My choice, online school is better. Reason one, I am finally able to make friends and talk with others without having to worry about being bullied or made fun of. In a classroom where students are rowdy and uncontrollable, it is hard for teachers to beg the students to quiet down. Using the knowledge of personal experience, I can say that humans act differently when online compared to real life. When online, it is harder to focus sometimes, yes. But if we stop now to imagine if we must ever go into lockdown again and have to do online class again, when we keep going, we can be able to get used to online classes and adapt better. This is a question. Will adults working in the schools be required to get the vaccine?
At this point, we are not sure about the mandates for vaccination. What the courts have said at this point is if you are, if you're going to impact the public's health, there's the potential we can mandate. However, as you know, that's something that will be discussed, I'm sure with labor, uh, and unions, and I think there's a process to go through before we get there. That's an answer, but it is not a concrete answer.
Azal, you want me to go?
Sure, go ahead.
So, uh, comment from a parent, I have two kids in school and I don't feel it is safe for them to go back. Uh, another, my choice is remote. There are too many cases. Another parent of a second grade student. I am a parent of a second grade student. I am very concerned that our kids have been out of the classroom for almost a year at this point and do not feel that remote learning is satisfying the learning needs of our children. My son's teachers are trying their very best, but 60% of the day is spent tending to behavioral issues and kids acting out. It leaves very little time for actual learning. At the, at the age of seven and eight, it's imperative that learning struggles are addressed and intervention is provided before it become, becomes part of the children's development. Video conferencing with 15 to 18 kids makes it near impossible to detect when a single child is struggling as they are likely embarrassed to speak up and ask for help. We must get back in the classroom.
I have one. Uh, this is from a parent whose spouse is a teacher in the district as well. Going by the examples of almost all schools that have opened, they have had to close once being partially or fully opened. The science and CDC and other health leaders are still stating it would be too early for any kind of openings as COVID is expected to continue to be on the rise over the winter months. I believe based on examples of other schools and based on the science, continued full remote learning is what is best and safest for students and staff. I have a student who believes we should not go to a hybrid model as soon as right now because even though we will wear a mask, we can still catch COVID.
Azal, I can jump in with two questions.
Okay.
One is facial expressions say a lot. Can we consider face shields for students and teachers rather than masks? If they're, if they're six feet apart? Um, I had no idea if you wanted to speak to that or just treat it as a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, the question was, could they use the condition of, as opposed to a mask?
It would not, face shields would not be recommended. You know, this is a virus that is spread through droplets and droplets fall to the ground. And so it would be the recommendation that the nose and mouth are covered. If a face shield does not do that, it will not be as effective as a face covering that is, um, a tightly woven mask.
Thank you. Next question, will there be repercussions for parents or guardians who send their children to school sick?
Well, I, I think when someone sends their student to school sick, the staff reaches out, the nurse will reach out and work with the families. It's more education and, uh, work with them on how dangerous that is, especially in light of this situation. So the school would reach out to the family, but it would be educational and supportive.
Uh, comment, my child is a second grade special education student and is not learning even half as much as when he is a full-time student or full-time in person. I really would like all kids to go back to school full-time. I have a, oh, go ahead.
I have a question from a parent. Uh, it may be more of a comment. Will having three groups be increasingly difficult for teachers? To hybrid and the remote? How would a teacher manage all of that? What access would a remote student have to help from teachers in comparison to hybrid students?
So the, the teachers would remain the same in that scenario and the class sizes would remain the same in a lot of schools. They've assigned multiple teachers to help with a given class using their extra staff, so the same staffing pattern that we have now, we'd execute in a hybrid model. So the teacher-student ratio would not change under, under the model.
All right, I have a question here. Uh, this is from a parent, uh, saying my, uh, I'm a parent of a child with Down syndrome who does not do well with face coverings and following instructions. I would like nothing better in the world than to have everything go back to normal. But because of my child's condition, it's a very difficult decision for myself and other parents who have similar situations to just let our children go back, uh, given, given that they are at higher risk for COVID. The question is, what are the plans that you guys have for these types of situations?
So again, we'd work with the families, uh, relative to dealing with the situation. But we do understand that certain groups have more pre-existing conditions, so obviously the risk is higher. But we have smaller class sizes in those venues and more support and we provide all the assistance and support using that staff as is humanly possible. But obviously there is a risk that we, we, we understand the parents.
I, I have one from a school nurse. I'm a school nurse in the district. I do not feel it is safe or wise to return any students to in-person learning at this time or any time in the near future. Every day I speak with Springfield parents and hear of families sick with COVID. Often if a family member tests positive, the rest of their close contacts are considered positive but are not actually tested. We know that brown people are at a higher risk of contracting COVID and dying of it. Sending our students back now is a racial injustice. It is not safe for our teachers who have worked tirelessly to make the best of this situation. We need to wait until public health experts, not DESI, agree it is safe to return.
I have a two-parter here. A, a comment from a parent of a sped student, um, who is saying, uh, I think advocated for a return, saying most classes are already small. They could go back. I think this is a parent of a, of a, a student in one of our low incident special education classes. And then this, uh, also a comment in the same message. I would like to propose a temporary hold on uniforms because I, I know I spent all my money on my children being home. It will be expensive and hard to find uniforms. Could we please for the rest of the year suspend uniforms? I have another question. I think we answered this already, but another, will students and parents be required to receive a COVID vaccination? Students and staff, and I know that was already addressed. I have a comment, keep our kids home and safe. Short and sweet. Uh, I think I, oh, go ahead.
I have an elementary teacher. Thanks, Paul. It seems as though many families are rightfully concerned about bringing the virus to their homes. I worry about the expectations that will be thrust upon teachers if we decide to go into a hybrid model. Will teachers be expected to teach their remote and in-person students at the same time? What are the expectations for teaching in this model? It is also evident that the remote day is too long for our young students. They have short attention spans that would only be shortened if we go into a hybrid model. Can the remote schedule be readjusted to better teach our students?
Um, I have a comment. As a parent and an educator in the Springfield public schools, I implore you to commit to a fully remote model for the remainder of the academic year to best ensure the safety of our children, educators, and families. We are losing community members every day to this virus and vaccinations will not reach most of us until summer if we are lucky. I would recommend adding resources and efforts to support family-based community learning pods to support the education and social emotional well-being of our students.
So I have a comment. It says, uh, it has to do with remote learning. Snow days should still be a thing. Staff and students need something to look forward to that gives an unexpected break and a feeling of excitement for anticipating one. The kids need something to look forward to and normalcy.
So, uh, you know, obviously the guidance has been, um, if you're in a remote situation, you wouldn't have to cancel school for a snow day and make up later on in June. So that would not be our plan unless there's a massive power outage. So we continue with our.
I have a comment on, from a staff member. Uh, if we will be bringing back people, any people into our school prior to COVID being, vaccines being widely distributed, I would recommend the following benefits to all staff working in school buildings. There's a list, uh, 25% pay increase, um, a guarantee of bonus sick days if contracting COVID, guaranteed funeral expenses, masks, gloves, and face shields provided to all those entering daily and temperature check and/or rapid testing daily of all individuals entering school buildings. Uh, another comment, just that short, keep school buildings closed. I vote for learning remote. They don't identify, uh, particular role. Another comment, also short, I believe with proper precautions, schools need to reopen. I think a question here, sort of question, sort of comment, what makes your proposal to keep our children safe different than that of the schools en masse that did reopen and had to close again?
We're going above and, we're going above and beyond the. We're gonna go above and beyond for the best interest of public health of our students, staff, and teachers. And we're following with the professionals like Edis and also the public health with Mr. Calcalp and Harris, uh, Kersher, and, uh, with our hospital officials, Dr. uh, Kerewatt, the CEO and president of Bay State Health Systems, Dr. Robert Bruce, Mercy Hospital, so our goal is, once it is health-wise safe and physical plant, again, we're going to hire standards, then we will look at a combination of hybrid and remote. And as the vaccine starts to kick in, then we'll start to consider moving to some sense of normalcy, but we're gonna base the decisions as we've always stated on public health, medicine, and science. As with myself and Commissioner Calcalp and Harris have said, since we started 38 or 40 weeks ago. Uh, so we haven't sat on our hands. Retrofitting is going on now, ordering, if you look in the back room, you see one of the carrier health, uh, air ventilation systems right there, so we're moving forward. In the meantime, you know, proud that we've been able to, uh, feed our students and families, we have 5,000 meals, breakfast, lunch, dinners and snacks and five million, five million, I'm sorry. And that I think well over, uh, 17, 18,000 laptops.
Plus the iPads in there.
iPads for patients who also helped us. So I, yes, we appreciate everyone's patience and understanding and working with us. And, uh, we wanna get our kids back to the school as soon as possible. We have to make sure it is safe and sound. And my administration schools, we will continue, we are investing millions and millions of dollars to make sure schools are properly retrofitted above and beyond DESI standards, ASH standards, and to some of the schools that were built in the late 1890s, 1800s, new schools are now being built. Wrightwood Lincoln, I thank Maria Perez for all her work on that, and then Sue Homer de Barry, uh, built, uh, Russian has pushed that, so 600 mil or 600 million dollars has been invested. We're dealing with our specialists here on health, Mr. Calcalp and Harris, physical plant, Director Sullivan, Pat Sullivan, and a specialized industrial hygienist, Bob Kerschner. We wanna go above and beyond it. That's what we are currently doing. That's what we are currently doing.
And the Mirror has funded these improvements out of the city side of the budget with grant money and other, uh, means, so we have not, like a lot of other school systems, had to lay off staff, so we've been, services have not suffered. We've been providing all of the services and have all of the staff employed, so very grateful to Mirror's team for that. Sorry, Lieutenant Paul.
Oh, next comment. Keep our kids home and safe. I have a son with a rare liver disease and I refuse to send him to school or his siblings until this pandemic is more under control. And I know we did already talk about families will certainly have that option in an, in any scenario. Azal, did you have any you wanted to go to?
Yep, um, Putnam parent, how is the changing from class to class going to be handled in the hallways? And how would you keep bathrooms monitored? Stay remote until spring. It will save more lives.
Um, I have a.
Go ahead, Paul.
I was just gonna say I have a related question, so I thought I might as well put this in as well at the same time. Um, the question, it's, it's multi-part, so one part of it was similar. So Azal, you just said, who will be cleaning the bathroom after each kid uses it or gets their diaper changed?
Correct.
Uh, next, oh, sorry.
Obviously our custodial staff would be dealing with things in the bathrooms, you know, and meeting all the stairs.
Uh, there's a question here. Um, for students who can't sit independently or wear a mask, uh, will Plexiglas be installed between desks?
Yeah, the recommendation right now with CDC is the six feet social distancing and wearing the mask. Where we have some varying conditions, we could look into it. But Plexiglas, it hasn't been one of the recommendations we've seen. Because people still need to wear the mask, is Helen also.
Superintendent, am I correct? We're gonna, we're staying at the six-foot distance. I understand Dusty was gonna cut it in half to three. So we're gonna continue to go above and beyond.
Thank you, Mayor. Our intention with any model would be to follow the CDC guideline of six feet. We have no intentions of going down to three feet as Dusty said you could engage it. We feel that, you know, when working with Helen, that the six-foot distancing is the way we would go with any model to ensure student safety and the masks and the hand wash following all of our costs.
Uh, another comment. I do not think our staff and students should be back in school right now. I worry about the health and safety of my wife, who is an educator, and my daughter, who is a student. We have spent money and time perfecting remote. We should continue it this way until 2021. Uh, another comment. My child will not be going back into a building until the pandemic is over. He is doing great with remote learning. Uh, go ahead, Zell, sorry.
Staff, if we go back in some capacity, how are we enforcing the mask policy? How is going, how is this going to affect staffing? If teachers or staff go away for vacation, are they still going to quarantine on their return?
So it would have guidelines if someone travel, they would have to quarantine. And, uh, you know, principals and teachers would work in the buildings to enforce the mask policy as they do with all our other policies and handle the discipline associated with them.
I have another staff person expressing concerns over staffing needs in a hybrid model. How do you propose to address the increased staffing needs of a quality hybrid model?
The ratios in the staffing, uh, we would have everyone in place that we have now, and we would organize the staff accordingly. We do not have a budget right now to add staffing, nor does anyone else in the Commonwealth. So we would organize it for the staff we have to do the best job with the staff we have. And then put all that stuff in place. We have not done layoffs like any other school system. So we have a very generous staffing.
I have a short, to-the-point comment. I understand the frustration of seeing our children struggle and fall behind. But losing an academic year that can be made up is better than losing lives that can't be replaced.
I can jump in with a comment. Thank you for having the courage to vote to keep us fully remote for the first marking period. Please continue to be courageous and keep us remote for the second marking period. Please open schools when and only when it's safe for everyone. Special education students need their whole team, speech, PT, OT specialists who travel between schools to give them their best education, which would not be safe. Special Edward to go back. Please open schools for all students when safe. All students want, want and deserve to be in, not just special education students.
I have a very specific set of questions from an educator in the alternative schools. How is a district going to keep those who work in alternative schools safe when staff may have to engage in protective holds? Will there be additional protective PPE being provided? And lastly, are there any protocols put in place with disciplinary issues that involve the threat of possibly spreading COVID-19?
So we, we've ordered all the PPE necessary for all of our different special ed programs. And we would have that PPE available and have protocols in place through the special ed department. You know, and Dr. Morris was part of ordering all that PPE with our nursing supervisor to be present.
We worked hard to continue to stockpile PPEs on school and city side. So we created our own stockpile to make sure, because even when the vaccine does kick in, there's gonna be a period of time as a transition period of time. So we are stockpiling PPEs and Director Sullivan, a stockpile of cleaning aspects. The automatic guns that you have, all the cleaning, all, everybody is being, has been trained, they're being trained. Continue to move forward. So these things, constant cleaning is going, going on. And if needed, where you have to have a full cleaning, that continues also.
And again, the mayor funded all the PPE out of his grant money and city side money. So we did not have to lay off any staff to fund any of the PPE.
Just, uh, oh, sorry. As an update on, uh, where we are, I, I, I'm not sure how many emails you have. I have about 355 messages not read yet. So I will, we can keep rolling through, but I wanted to let you know, let school committee know kind of where we are in the, in the numbers.
I don't have quite that many, but maybe half.
Uh, so next comment, feedback about back to school. I have a high school and middle school student and think there should be a choice. For the ones that want to go to school, they should be able to. For the ones that want to stay home, they should be allowed to. Even some sort of hybrid is better than no option?
I have a comment from a teacher. It is beyond time for our students to go back to school. I can see it in the eyes and voices of my students as they languish at home. Despite the great lengths to provide students with technology, it is not enough. Computers cannot replace the in-person contact that humans need. School is more than academics, as we well know. It is now time to be brave, school committee members, teachers, and families. With the proper safety precautions in place, we can and should get back. The evidence is mounting on the harm that has been inflicted on the youth of our country. Private schools have been open in Massachusetts since August. Our students deserve the same opportunity. Springfield Public Schools can and should do this now.
I have a comment. I believe the best action is to wait until the teachers and students have their vaccine and start school after April vacation. Another comment. How can we expect little ones to wear a mask all day? I don't think it's safe to return. As a mother, I have to think about my children's health over education at this point.
I am a parent of a first grader and a preschooler. My first grader has been doing amazing in remote learning. My preschooler is autistic and hates remote learning. My question is, kids with disabilities and needs should be in, kids with disabilities and needs to be in school, for kids who have disabilities and need to be in school, how will things be done? And what will happen to those kids that cannot wear a mask for a longer period of time?
Well, preschoolers would be in the first, one of the first groups to return. And again, we'd have to work through the issues with mask wearing to ensure everyone's safe.
I have a, a comment, it's not sure this is a comment or a question. I, I would like to know what about the legal rights of these children? What about the legal and federal laws being broken when it comes to IEPs? So that's not very specific, but.
And we're delivering all the services in the IEPs presently using remote instruction. Each student has a remote learning education.
Just a short comment. My kids will not be going back to school. Keep your COVID to yourself. We will not send my kids to get sick. Uh, I prefer my daughter to stay on remote learning for now. As a parent, I'm okay with the hybrid process as long as any student is not high-risk medically.
I have a comment from a student who feels a little bit of concern with remote learning because of the way people are falling asleep on online class. Also, there are people who can't get in because of the internet. Some don't have computers or a phone. I have. You can go ahead if you have one, Paul.
Sure. I think this is rhetorical question, but most school districts spent months over the summer preparing for a safe transition back to in-person learning. How do you expect to do this tedious and extensive work while simultaneously maintaining quality remote learning?
So I'll, I'll just give you a quick answer. We spent a great deal of time this summer and we are planning for the remote, but also planning for a hybrid return. So we put a lot of work in this summer on planning for a hybrid model and would be ready should the conditions be set.
And another question. Will there be clear behavioral guidelines and expectations that will be enforced strongly for students who do not adhere to mask wearing and social distancing?
So yes, would be the answer. We have, we got the classroom teachers and principals following.
Another short one, stay with remote learning for the rest of the year.
I have a comment. As an adult working in this SPS system, I do not appreciate being told I will be forced to take any vaccine in order to keep my job. What goes into my body should be my decision without it affecting my employment or position.
I have a parent who's saying, uh, my daughter and my son are gonna stay home and do online learning. I have another comment. This is a little bit longer one. I'll try to go quickly. Thank you for the opportunity to share my input regarding the children returning or not to school. I am not in agreement with allowing my son or any of my children to return to school at this time. I have found that remote learning has not been as intimidating as initially assumed. And even more so, my son's grades and effort have increased tremendously. The teachers and other school personnel have been more than helpful and supportive during this time of adjustment and have been managing each and every one of the children very well. In regards to concerns of children missing out on the social aspect of school, I highly disagree with these concerns, being that during school, the children don't get beyond 15 to 45 minutes of socializing per day via school lunch and recess. Aside from that, they are not typically allowed to socialize during class, or else it's considered disruptive. So I don't believe that they would be missing out on much in this area. To be honest, my son gets way more socializing opportunities in one weekend at home than he does in a full week of school. Lastly, as a very involved parent, even while working, and now that I am not, I have not had to get involved with my son in his learning nearly as much now that he is learning, home learning, than I did when he was in school. I must say, this has been a much better experience now than it ever was, not to mention the decreased risk of spreading the virus by everyone meeting while in school. Have a blessed day.
I have, I think the students should stay fully remote until it is safe to go in. If it's not safe enough to go in person Monday through Friday, full day, we should not risk students' health or staff trying to do a hybrid model.
I have a question here that we spoke to in the presentation, but it's probably worth reiterating. If you have more than one child, how will be that, how will that be handled? When one is in kindergarten and the other in third grade, will one be remote when I have to bring the other to school? And I think in our, we did share that for siblings, we're gonna make sure that they go to school on the same days.
How often will COVID testing for students and teachers be provided?
We do not have a current policy that we can share with you at this time, but certainly it is something that we're thinking about and hope to be able to share prior to returning to any model.
A lot of this changes, by the way, you know, we've invested millions of dollars, every dime I can get my hands on for the city side and the school side. But we are desperately waiting, awaiting the federal government to act with the stimulus plan, which would incorporate school needs too. There's only so much locality can do. And we're working closely on the state level with Governor Baker and our delegation. And we're working closely with Chairman Neal, Congressman Neal also. And I just hope on the federal level that some of this partisanship can be put aside and bickering and some bipartisanship can be done because our residents and our businesses are hurting. And we keep, we'll continue to spend the money that is needed as we've done with other natural and man-made disasters. I have to be very thankful to my cabinet heads all the way on the Reagan file. We tested it true. We've been through a number of natural man-made disasters. But we're very, we're hoping that the federal government can come forth with the monetary needs and the supply needs and the testing needs so we can incorporate it in what we're already doing here at a local level. Those who are viewing and watching now, our goal is your goal. We wanna get our kids, staff, students, and teachers back in our system, school system as soon as possible, as soon as it is a public health-wise safe. And we can continue to move forward on that and keep making the investments. And we're thankful to your continued patience and understanding and partnership. These are challenging and surreal times that we are currently living in. But we will, we will defeat this COVID-19. And we will continue to move the city and our school system forward. And your input is important, is important. Thank you.
Uh, next comment. I, I would hope that we continue to keep school remote. My daughter teaches in a hybrid model in the eastern part of the state. She has caught COVID, as have many of the teachers. Although the data says kids do not have severe symptoms, they do spread it to. they do spread it to teachers and their, and their parents. I think to keep everyone as safe as possible is best.
I have one from a mother of five sons. I am against returning to in-person learning. Remote learning has been a challenge, but my sons took this challenge on and we have been successful. More importantly, they are safe. My sons have special needs and three are on IEPs. As a special needs mom, I know how difficult it could be dealing with behaviors in teaching. One of my sons is very low functioning and needs a lot more attention. I am happy to say that keeping him home has been the best decision. He is getting all his services and has thrived in his education. I am sharing my son's story because it's my experience. I also know that it's not everyone else's experience. I feel that more resources should be allocated to support struggling families with remote learning. It is not safe to bring back the students and teachers to schools. The classroom was already oversized before the pandemic and the system understaffed. The cases are on the rise and we need to preserve the teachers we have.
A couple hours till eight. If there's one more question, Azelle, that you might have, or Mr. Foster, Paul might have, then we will conclude. We will take, continue to take, uh, as we did before, the questions and comments to, uh, so we have those comments and questions so we can get that. To you and school committee members, uh, we'll be giving that information too. So as we stay consistent as we did with the last town meeting, we're gonna close it out. Azelle and Paul, if there's, uh, if there's one more question that could possibly, uh, or, or, or comments.
I think I have one question that I think might be helpful to, to answer because I think somebody is referencing to the, the presentation in August about what hybrid might look like. Cause they're saying what they, what about cleaning on Wednesdays? I, I think in August, we had been thinking at that time that Wednesday would be a, a, a fully remote day. And what we shared tonight is different. So I think they're asking what about the cleaning that was gonna happen on Wednesday?
We would have the custodial staff cleaning in the evenings and we think that four kids back because they've been out a long time to get another day in school and deal with that models. Other custodial pieces will be done in the.
Azelle?
Okay, I have, I have a, my last one is from a mother who has a child, two children, one in high school, one in middle school, and she is a nurse. I think the children should remain safe and stay at home. However, I think the teachers should be made to attend school and teach and teach front of their classrooms where they will be safely, where they will be able to safely social distance. Teaching, education and learning, I'll have to do with environment. So this person is, is basically saying that can teachers be in front of students in the schools and students be home? That's their recommendation. I'm paraphrasing.
I would, uh, like to thank everybody focused Springfield. I want to thank all the school committee members who participated in this meeting. I want to thank my city side of director of facility and parks, Patrick Sullivan, Mountain Human Services Commissioner Helen Colton Harris, Bob Kirchner, principal at the Raleigh Tower, Oaken Industrial Hygienist for being here, Superintendent Warwick. And I want to thank you, the viewing public. We understand that there's well over four thousand individuals or views, uh, of this, and that's important. We want to get information, uh, out to you. And we will continue to be cognizant of your needs and your requests. As a school committee, we'll undertake a consideration of a vote this coming, um, Thursday. I thank each and every one of you for your continued patience and understanding and collaboration with us. I know it's been a difficult time for each and every one of us. We are all going night and day, uh, for the good of our students and for the good of our city. In the meantime, if you can, I hope you can, I wish you a very Christmas, a happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa. And more importantly, good health. And that there is light at the end of the tunnel. We will get through this. We will defeat this COVID-19 and move forward. So till the next time, good health and God bless. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Much.